Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Homewood City Council to order for Monday, June 23rd. It's right at 6 o'clock. And we'll go ahead and start off with an invocation from Counselor Smith. If you'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able to rise.
In the light of events that have happened in our world in the last week, I thought it might be a good night to do a prayer for peace. So I have the Philippians 4:7, "And the peace of God which surpasses all understanding will guard your hearts and your minds." Bow your heads and pray with me. Lord God, we ask for your peace to settle deeply in our community, in our neighborhoods, throughout our country and the world. Where there is unease and fear, bring safety and calm. Unite neighbors in friendship and cooperation and heal divisions caused by misunderstanding. Help our community to work together for the common good, supporting one another through trials and rejoicing in blessings. May your peace guide us to act justly and compassionately. Let every neighborhood become a place where peace flourishes and hope grows strong. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Face of life, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Thank you for that. Mr. Segras, if you'll call a roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualdney.
Here.
Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton. Sims.
Here.
Brant.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nelms.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President Jones.
I'm here.
So we're 10, 10 strong. Missing Mr. Wolverton. Okay, we have the reading of the minutes from Monday, June the 9th. Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of those and approve them as distributed?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Nelms. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. We have really five appointments tonight for board vacancies. Very excited and appreciative of all the people that have applied for these particular positions. We'll start off to my right, your left, Ward 1. We've got the Homewood Environmental Commission. That closed today. And we have one person, is it Nathan Vickers? That would, that's the person that applied. We do not have any other applications. So do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Okay, alright, it's been, it's been motioned and seconded by Ward 1. Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 10 to 0. Next, we move to Ward 2. We have the Beautification Board. That closed today. And the applicant for that was Lauren Walton. So do I have a motion to appoint Ms. Walton?
Second.
Okay, alright, it's made by Counselor Alamon, seconded by Counselor Sims. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. Again, staying in Ward 2. Remember, we had a little confusion on, the person that had applied for this was actually not in Ward 2. So we did not have any interviews. So our person for that would be Mr. Joe Levens for Park 2, Ward 2, Park Board. So is there a motion to appoint Mr. Levens?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Alamon. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0. Let's see, you have another one. You have lots of, wow, your third one here. Library Board. That closed today at 4:30. And we have one applicant. I've heard this name before, Mike Higginbotham.
Oh.
Served with him, served with him. I'm sure a lot of you did.
Sub move.
Okay, okay, motion. Okay, Counselor Alamon made the motion, Counselor Smith seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to 0. To appoint Mike Higginbotham. Okay, you have no more, sorry. We're moving down to Ward 4. Alright, Abatement Board, that closed today. And we have one applicant, Susan Chalmers. So, was that yea? Was that a motion? Okay, Counselor announced.
And I will second that.
And Counselor Smith seconded that. Yea, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That is fantastic. We have really been carrying these over. Just one reminder, again, for Ward 4, you have the Beautification Board. But that doesn't close until July 28th, so we have time. So thank you for all the applicants. Mr. Segras, if you'll just send those out, those congratulations, and tell Mr. Higginbotham, you know, he's no longer a citizen, he's serving again, so. Tell him we're happy to have him.
That's awesome.
Okay, we do not have, to my knowledge, any additions to the agenda. So just looking for a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was Counselor Gualdney. Counselor Smith seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. Okay, we got the consent agenda. You can read through that. That was a drop. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Nelms. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0 for the consent agenda. Alright, moving on to old business. We've got 1805-25. The bid date is set for July the 8th at 3:00 PM for the US 31 Tunnel improvements. So without objection, we'll carry that over for the July 8th meeting. Next, we have 010525. Bid date held on June 10th at 3:00 PM for the Homewood Library Interior Finishes Phase 3. Coming to us from Kale Smith and Judith Wright. We have a report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Smith?
Yes, we met last week and heard from Mr. Smith. And the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid from CT General Contractors. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Gualdney.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Finance? Okay, any questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 2598. 010625. Request to approve demolition contract for city-owned structure at 185 Oxmore Road. Coming to us from Wyatt Pew. Report from Finance. Counselor Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and heard about this from Mr. Pew. This is the old Waffle House building in West Homewood. And the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving that demolition contract. The motion was made by Counselor Alamon and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Any questions for Finance? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 2599. 020625. Request for city manager to sign contract with Alabama Power to install three flock cameras at park locations. Coming to us from Mr. Bischoff. Report from Finance. Counselor Smith?
Yes, these are three cameras that are going to be located at the soccer fields. And remind me where else, Mr. Adam? Can't remember the other two. I know it's soccer.
There's two soccer field and there's one further up at the intersection of Oxmore.
Oh, by the maintenance facility and the, yes. So over in our West Homewood Athletic Fields. And this is the first time, I think, that we've had Alabama Power do the installation for us. And the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving that. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Wonderful, thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, that's Resolution, passes 10 to 0. Resolution 25-100, or 100th Resolution.
Do we have a pardon?
Exciting stuff. Alright, 030625. Request permission for city manager to sign a contract with RPCGB to provide HUD grant management services. Coming to us from Kale Smith. Report from Finance. Counselor Smith?
Yes, this is part of the work that we are doing over in the Mayfair area and 31 with stormwater. Am I right about that, Kale?
Yes.
Yes. And the, this federal grant is flowing through HUD, which is the reason for this. And the Regional Planning Commission in Greater Birmingham is going to manage that process for us. It's kind of complicated. So the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving that. And motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Gualdney.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 25101. 040625. Request to accept Library Services and Technology Act grant. Coming to us from Judith Wright. Report from Finance. Counselor Smith?
Yes, this is a good grant that our library staff has gotten for us. And we voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving this. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Okay, thank you for that report. And we love accepting grants. It's always a happy thing. Any questions?
I had one, and I don't know, who knows, maybe Ms. Wright. We've got, I think they're going to reimburse us for $10,000 of that grant.
Yes.
Is there, do we know what exactly we have to do to get that reimbursement? Sometimes I think.
I think we just submit paperwork. It's, the grant is for $10,000, so our city portion is 2,500. But we pay the 12,500 upfront.
Right, right.
And then they will reimburse us the 10,000 once they receive the paperwork and submit the reimbursement.
Okay, sometimes those things get a little squirrely. It's hard to get your money out of the government.
No, our library is very good about making sure they get all of their grant funds when they're supposed to.
Wonderful, okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 25-102. 350425. Public hearing set for July 14th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to consider installation of traffic calming system on the western end of Oxmore Road near Northmore Drive and Oakmore Drive. Without objection, we'll carry that over for our public hearing on the 14th. 050625. Request permission to install stormwater diversion device at the roundabout at East Hawthorne and Linwood. Coming to us from Kale Smith. We have a report from Public Works, but since Mr. Wolverton's not here, I've asked his, I've asked Counselor Alamon to report that out, if you don't mind.
No problem. The committee voted 4 to 1 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Gear and seconded by Counselor Nelms. Counselor Sims voted no.
Okay, great. Are there any questions? I don't.
Yeah, I would ask Counselor Sims if he would give us a recount of his meetings in the area.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Counselor Andrews. I was just going to reference that really, the only reason I voted no in committee was because I was just trying to make sure that we had time to inform the community. Not against the project. Got out there yesterday and informed some of the neighbors. Did not receive any negative feedback, really just making, you know, obviously they welcome the stormwater management improvements to help with their situation there. And just wanted to make sure they had notification and those who are aware are in support. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, how long do you think that will last there? Do we have a feel for that? Not really.
Five to 10 years.
Okay. And it's really just, are we just putting asphalt there? Is that all we're doing? Okay. See what works.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. We do not need a resolution for that. We'll just pass that here on council. 060625. Request permission to make improvements to the city's right-of-way in the alley behind 306 Devon. Report from Public Works. Counselor Alamon, if you don't mind.
No problem. The committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
Okay, great. Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 25103. 070625. Request permission to work in the city's right-of-way behind 1520 and 1522 Roseland to install a sump pump outlet line to Griffin Brook Creek. Coming to us from Roger White and Kale Smith. Our last Public Works report. Counselor Alamon.
The committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Gear and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions and comments on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 25-104. Okay, 100625. Request for consideration for permission to work on the right-of-way in the sidewalk in front of Track Shack. Coming to us from Lewis Communications and Counselor Smith. Report from Special Issues. Counselor Sims?
Yes, thanks, Counselor Jones. This issue was considered by the committee last Monday, and the committee voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval. Motion was made by Counselor Smith and seconded by Counselor Andrus. Counselors Alamon and myself voted no. I did want to add, though, however, since then, we've received some additional information about the process, that this actually, this consideration went before Film Birmingham and through the, you know, part of what we had delegated to them in partnership for consideration of location agreements and filming. So knowing that it did get okay through that process, that does change my opinion on this. And just wanted to reference, you know, with that additional information, I wanted to share it with the rest of council as well.
And I would add one additional thing.
Sure.
After the meeting, they didn't realize that they should get it. So after the meeting, they gave me that information about Film Bham. But they also have an insurance policy, should anything happen, naming the city of Homewood as the beneficiary. So if there, if anything should happen, which nothing should, there would be no liability on the city's part.
Okay. Alright, any other questions, comments on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 10 to 0. A Resolution 25-105. 100525. Public hearing set for tonight at 6:00 PM for consideration of amended development plan for property at 800 Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University's proposed Bulldog District to permit construction of two separate residential villages that together would provide three student residence halls as well as associated on-campus parking facilities, courtyards, landscaping, other site improvements. All of this is coming from Mr. Smith. Kale Smith and the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 for this. So we'll start off with a report from Planning and Development. Counselor Andrus.
Yes, so we heard about the Stadium Village at this point, right? Because the Bulldog, the two that were down by Lake Shore did not pass the BCA. So we heard about the Stadium Village, which the committee voted 5 to 0 to refer to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Jaleet Nelms and seconded by Counselor Nick Sims.
Okay, thank you for that report, Counselor Andrus. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And if, I want, I want Mr. Smith to kind of review where we are with this and.
Yeah, so last week, thank you, President Jones. Last week, when we were putting together the ordinance for the Village Stadium, we realized that Village Stadium sits on one parcel, and that parcel ID had a typo in the number. So we went back to Sanford and discussed with them. And we feel like it's the safest thing to advertise it correctly over the next four weeks. And so to have a new public hearing on July 28th.
Okay.
So we're going to carry this over?
No, I think we have to.
Yeah, we have to.
We have to set a new.
Yeah, we have to set a new public hearing date. Because it, the, the legal description just needs to be corrected. And we received it that way, to be clear. We received it. So they're very open to making this done correctly. So, so we're going to, but for procedure, we need to.
Set a new.
Allow anyone that wants to speak, to speak. But be aware that on July the 28th, we'll have another public hearing, and people are allowed to speak there too, as well. So, but we're not, to be clear, we're not really going to vote on anything tonight. We're really going to need at some point after the public hearing to reset the bid opening date for July 28th. Does that make sense?
Well, can't, can't we make a motion now to, to reset that public hearing?
Well, we, procedurally, we just need to allow the public hearing. And then, and then after that, then we can, I'll open.
I think if you do that tonight, you're going to let the public. Oh, yeah, because we have a question.
Yeah, okay. So, hearing all of that, is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this, this matter? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the front and sign in, please.
And I'm happy to come back on July 28th. I think, I didn't know if this was a time that questions could be asked, or if that should wait until the 28th.
Completely, I mean, we're, we're going to hear it that night as well.
Okay.
So they'll be, you know, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But tonight, we were just not able to do anything business-wise because of that legal description of the state.
Thank you. I think I'm a neighbor right there on Curry Way. And just curious if part of the proposal includes anything that they would do kind of in consideration of the neighbors with buffers and some of those things. The buildings that are currently closest to us are two stories. So jumping to six stories outside of our kitchen window is a big jump. So just wondering if there's any consideration for buffers and things like that with the project.
Are you familiar with where it is?
Yes.
On campus?
Well, I have, we have looked at the map that was mailed to our house.
Yes, so it's at the football stadium. There won't be like a, a land strip between the buildings and the neighborhood.
It's not the, it's not the property where the current married student, former married student apartments are, in that lower spot right there.
No, it's at the campus, I mean, at the stadium.
It overlooks the stadium.
So it'll be on the other side of the baseball field.
Yeah, here's a picture up here.
Yeah.
If you want to view that, it's overlooking the stadium.
Okay.
The part you thought about wasn't, that the BCA does not grant variance for that, so that part is not, is not coming to council.
Not coming to council, that's right.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was the question I needed answered. That's even better than what the buffer would look like.
This is all that's left.
That's all that's left, is that, that, yeah.
Perfect. I don't think we have received that. That would be great.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad we answered your question. Thank you, Mayor. Alright, anyone else care to speak for or against? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm open to motions or comments from the council at this point.
Entertained a motion to, and go ahead and do it? Set the public hearing for July 28th?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so it was Counselor Andrus made the motion to reset the public hearing for July 28th at 2025 at 6:00 PM. And that was seconded by Counselor Harden. Okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0 to reset that. Thank you very much. Alright, you can see the committee referral. We have lots of items. It's going to be an exciting committee. And I'll, I'll make a quick announcement, just so everyone knows. We have a, an additional Monday night in, in June. So all of our committee meetings are going to be next Monday rather than July 7th. So I thought that would be helpful for all of us. So that's when we're going to have our committee meetings.
So we are not meeting on the 7th, is that right?
Do we need to make a motion to do that, or? Yes, I'm seeing, I'm seeing Mike nod his head.
I mean, that's the only way you have to do it.
Yeah, right, okay. Alright, well, I would make a motion to change our committee meetings for, that were scheduled for July 7th, to June 30th.
Okay. Okay, motion by counselors. And that, okay, and that was Counselor Nelms who seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 10 to 0. Thank you for that. You see committee referral agenda. Is there a motion to approve the committee report? Okay, Counselor Alamon, you're fast on that. And Counselor Nelms. Seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. We got new business. Request for consideration, approval of vouchers for June 10th through June 23rd. And this is Mr. Gualdney's last time to review the vouchers. I know, I see a tear in his eye.
You know, it didn't even occur to me. It was the last time, so.
This is the last, yeah, we're moving.
Now I can smile from here to here.
Now you're smiling, okay. So thank you for, you know, it's a lot of work, it really is. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I'm sure you'll happily move to approve the vouchers.
Yes, sir. I had no questions. Everything looked like it was in line, so I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, I heard Counselor Smith first. So we got Gualdney and Smith on that. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, that's Resolution, check me out here, 25-106. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, and I just want to tell everybody, it's, it's Counselor Smith's birthday today.
Yay.
So we're so happy for her. So we're so happy for her and that's, and I just had a cupcake right before the meeting, so that's why I'm like about to jump out of my chair, I'm so excited. I had a cup of coffee too, so, Mayor, you're up, if you have any comments.
I don't have anything tonight other than to tell Counselor Smith happy birthday.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, Counselor Gualtney.
I have no commentary, however, I need to double check, are we going to have, I won't be here next Monday, are we going to have quorum for public safety? Because we've got a couple of items, you're here. I'm here. Okay, no more. Andrew, I guess.
So we should have a quorum.
Ippi.
Who else is on?
Andrew.
Which one you all have?
Oh.
Which one you all have?
You're here, okay. All right, so you all get the, the joy of working through the Oxmore stuff and then we have a fire hydrant, so everybody good handling that? John, are you good sharing, or Jaleet, you the one you all? Okay, all right, so we'll set the meeting, I won't be here immediately following Finance, I have no other commentary tonight, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Gualtney, Counselor Gier?
I have a couple of announcements or updates from Arts Council. July the, in July and August, Craigor Brown, our state sculptor, will be exhibiting in the art gallery downstairs. And he is known for his work with.
I'll be here.
He's known for his work with Alabama Marble and it ought to be really exciting. So we're, we're planning a closing reception in August and I would love it if all you guys could plan to stop by and, because it's going to be a big deal. And then September fourteenth, there's a salsa dance demonstration and lessons at the edge, kind of in honor of Hispanic Month and right around there. So we're looking forward to that and we'll have more details about that coming up as well, so thanks.
All right, thank you for that. Counselor Alamon?
Just wanted to announce that I will not be the person dancing the salsa dance in our Hispanic Heritage Month. I hope we get some professionals there. You know, I think as we're coming to election season, I just want to point out that I have enjoyed serving with every single one of you. And that as we're going to rotate out, it's been a pleasure to get to know each one of you, I know where your hearts are in terms of trying to serve this city, maybe not John, but everyone else. And I think it's important to remember why we serve and how we come to this, these positions and the trust of the community and the residents and just hope that we keep a positive outlook in how we go through this process as we prepare to elect the next leaders of Homewood. So I want to thank all of you for demonstrating that for five years and, and for a lot of you, longer than that. Thank you.
That's beautifully said, thank you for that. Counselor Sims?
Yes, thank you Counselor Jones, I just wanted to mention a couple of things for people's awareness related to rezoning items for, that are actually in the city of Birmingham but adjacent to the city of Homewood. One is, coming up on July first, there's a site development plan for Palisades Dental, which is up for approval. And that will actually be, you know, near where the one-way entrance is and, or the do-not-enter is, at short Oxmore, Old Oxmore. Right by that, there's a vacant lot where the trees were cut down, probably about a year or so. It is that site that is being developed as Palisades Dental. And so that plan will be for consideration July first. Neighbor made me aware of it and reached out to them, there is only one planned ingress egress from, from Oxmore, there's no planned access from, from Old Oxmore. Just want to let y'all know that aspect as a heads up, just in case any neighbors ask. And then the second is, there is a South Side Community rezoning plan that the city of Birmingham has proposed that will be for a public hearing at five P M. this Thursday. And it includes three sections of properties which are adjacent to Homewood, including the Palisades area from a qualified business district to, to just general commercial. Another area where Somerset Homes is, it just kind of renames the zoning district. And then a third area that is by Valley View Drive that changes the zoning from planned residential to general commercial. So I just wanted, for awareness, let people know what those notifications are about so that you can look into it for yourself. There is part of that zoning map which actually carries over the commercial into current residences, so masking the city Birmingham planning staff to check the map on that. But just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that and the public as well, in case they want to attend those meetings or make comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brandt?
Nothing, everybody have a good Fourth of July weekend.
Wonderful, thank you. Counselor Smith, birthday girl?
Um, yes, I need to set Finance because I believe I have.
Lots of items.
Lot of items, probably about eleven, so I will set Finance for five and I appreciate all of the kind well wishes today and the cupcakes, they were delicious and I'm like you, I'm a little bit of a sugar buzz right now, so.
Yes.
That's it for me.
All right, wonderful, thank you for that. Counselor Nels?
I just want to piggyback off of the Craigor Brown thing. Craigor Brown is one of my very best friends, has been for forty years and he has been at every birth of every child. He's the godfather of my children and let's, let's show up for him, he's amazing. And he also played baseball with Sam, so, he's been around a long time and we love him. So come, 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 be here.
Nice, thank you. Counselor Andrus?
Do not need to set P and D, I've got two items on the table and so no need to set P and D. I did want to invite everybody, our Jefferson County Council Coalition is meeting at eight thirty on, on Wednesday morning and we will be at the Sixteenth Street Baptist Church. And if anyone wants to join us, the city of Birmingham is hosting. And we are actually going to take a tour at eight o'clock that morning, if anyone wants to come early and take a tour of the church, so.
Thank you for that. Counselor Harden?
I have nothing to say. Other than Counselor Brandt and I's children showed up from Italy and they made it home. Mr. President, do we need to set Public Works or do we set?
Oh, yeah.
Public Works. Yeah, we've got one item for Public Works.
We'll, we'll need to set Public Works at the conclusion of that. Okay, and you know, and I echo the remarks by Counselor Alamon, you know, it has been a pleasure serving with, with all of you and it's, it's been my pleasure and I've, I've enjoyed it and I know that Homewood is in good hands and will continue to be, be in good hands, so.
Well, I want to quote John Harden, we still have a few months left, guys, come on now, we're not going away yet, come on.
Still some time.
Oh, goodness.
Well, hey, speech.
Okay, so with that, I hope everyone has a, a safe Independence Day holiday and we will see you next, well, first we'll see you next Monday for the committee meetings and then you can have a nice holiday. And then we'll see you back here on July the fourth, we're adjourned.